Everyone, and welcome to the Monday, August 22 meeting of the Pembroke Board of Selectmen. We will begin this evening with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please note that this meeting is being made available to the public through a live video and audio broadcast on Comcast Government Access Channel 15, and is being recorded for broadcast at future dates. Comments made in open session will be recorded. A couple of announcements I have, but I will ask the board if anyone has an announcement they'd like to make. First of all, I'd just like to note that Selectmen Walter is not with us this evening. He is in Kingston, attending the Pollof County Water Resource Meeting. As you know, we have a lot of issues with our water, and especially the drug. And so Bill is our representative there, and he's at their meeting tonight. We have the 15th anniversary of the 9/11 vigil. Please come and show your support of our military, fire, police, and their families on Sunday, 9/11, at 4:00 p.m. on the Pembroke Town Green. Dan Clark, the singing trouper, will be performing. And this is sponsored by the Pembroke Military Support Group, the American Union Post 143. And you can RSVP by September 1st to cedar76@yahoo.com. And this will also be on the town's website. I had the pleasure of attending Troops 43 Eagle's Skull Award Ceremony, which was held in Bryanville, at the center there. And Nicholas Morrison earned his Eagle Award on April 19th. After watching people in wheelchairs trying to get to the basketball courts in the back of the community center, Nicholas saw the need to build a handicap ramp, making the basketball courts handicapped accessible. He also had the surrounding area cleaned of brush and rubbish. Nicholas is the 27th Eagle Award winner at Troop 43 since 2001. It was a very moving ceremony, and it was very, very well attended. The first item on our agenda tonight is to discuss a new procedure, or the possibility of a new procedure, in our proposed door-to-door solicitation bylaw. Ed, you passed out this sheet. Did you want to take a minute and review that, please?
Sure. For the board's information, this is just kind of like a table of contents for a bylaw that is going to be proposed for the Fall Town Meeting, as requested by the board and recommended by the Police Chief. So basically, as you can see there, it will mention to... It mentions that a license is required for any solicitor or canvasser that wants to engage in the business. And the provisions of the chapter shall not apply to anybody exempted under Chapter 100 of the general laws. So anybody from religious standpoint, there's a whole list of things that are exempt. But anybody that's not exempt will need to have a license in order to solicit door-to-door in town.
What kind of license? Pardon?
What kind of license?
To solicit door-to-door.
A door-to-door solicitation license?
Yes.
I just wanted to be specific.
Right. Yeah, I mean, it's going to be spelled out. So there'll be a definition of what a solicitor or canvasser is. There'd be an application process, starting with applicants filing with the Chief of Police. Public hearing notice and issuance of the license provisions in the next section. Revocation, expiration, and renewal of such licenses will be addressed in sections of the bylaw. There'd be a clause about misrepresentation, where no solicitor license or exempted from license may represent in any manner. The buyer's right to cancel is stipulated in Chapters 93, 93A, and 255 of the general laws. And that'll all be referenced in the bylaw. There'll be a no solicitation list. We mirrored that off of several bylaws and laws of cities and towns in the Commonwealth. That'll be placed on the town's website after the passage of this bylaw. And that the Police Department will have this list. And so that list will be given out to anybody that is going to be soliciting, that has gotten an approved license from the Board of Selectmen. Obviously, you know, part of the bylaw will be penalties for trespassing on property where a person has displayed a no trespassing or no soliciting sign, according to the town bylaw. And there'll be penalties associated with any violation of this. There'll also be a second bylaw that'll be proposed by the Chief of Police to allow the Police Department to charge for fingerprinting for any prospective licensee. And this is consistent with the bylaws in many communities that have a bylaw that deals with the door-to-door solicitation. So that's in summary of what is in store for the Fall Town Meeting.
Do you have any questions for Ed at this time?
No questions, just a comment that it's a bylaw to finally satisfy this board. What this board wanted to do is come up with a policy that had more teeth to it than simply a Board of Selectmen's policy. So I'm certainly in favor of a town bylaw that has controls, controls over the folks that do go door-to-door, and it protects the public. So if someone wants to go door-to-door, they really need to make an effort to do it and really want to and need to, as part of their business plan, to go door-to-door. So I think it helps the Board of Selectmen do our job in serving the citizens.
I would agree with that completely, and I think we've been making some good progress on this. We do have an appointment at 7:15. Let me just skip ahead for a moment if I can. We had a recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals that James Gallagher II be appointed a member of the zoning board as expeditiously as possible. And this letter, which we received Friday, is signed by William Colley, Frederick Cathavan, and Linda McDonald. So they need our action tonight. And because it wasn't on the agenda, I agreed, under the circumstances, they're a very busy board, and they have a lot of important issues that come up before them. And they really need to have James Gallagher to fill in a vacancy on their board. So I would bring this to the Selectmen's attention tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I would move the appointment of Mr. Gallagher, based on the recommendation of the three sitting members.
Motion by Arthur. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Matthew. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's four to zero. Thank you very much, gentlemen, for taking that out of order and not being on the agenda. We have Mr. Dement here with us tonight. He's scheduled to speak to us at 7:15. If you would like to come up and talk to us right now, a couple minutes early?
Sure.
Thank you. Want to introduce yourself again? I know you've been here before.
Sure. So yeah, I'm Steve Diamond. I moved to Pembroke back in June, yeah, June of this year. I work for Trinity Solar. I'm the district manager there. So I want to apply to go door-to-door, solicit in Pembroke, the town that I live in.
I know, as I said, you've appeared before us before.
Yeah, I've been here before.
And the board has had an opportunity to ask you questions, but I can ask the board again. Have any questions for you?
I have a question.
Sure.
So last time you were here, you talked about how your business plan is to lease solar panels to people on their houses. And I had to just do interest rates, right, and collect yearly interest?
So it's not actually a lease. I mean, we do do a lease, but the primary product that we sell is called the PPA. It stands for Power Purchase Agreement, where, sorry. Say you were the homeowner, you guys are already buying your electricity from EverSource or National Grid. This, we put the panels up on their roof, no cost. They don't have to pay for the installation, permits, maintenance, and they're just buying their electricity off their roof at a cheaper rate. So Power Purchase Agreement, they're just buying their electricity off their roof. So they're agreeing to do that. The interest rate that you talked about, what was that, like, in terms of like a lease?
Yeah, I wasn't sure how your financial structure was.
Yeah, we do like a... It's a 20 or 25-year agreement, Power Purchase Agreement, and we do fixed rates or variable rates. But there's no like interest or anything like that. It's just the rate that they're paying for the electricity. Right now, customers in Pembroke are paying around 18 to 20 cents per kilowatt hour for electricity. And we charge, our rates are about 40% to 50% cheaper with the solar panels, and they don't have to pay for the install.
So now, if someone opted to go with the variable rate, and the price of your solar electricity went much, much higher than the average rate of electricity, would they be forced to pay that?
So it takes us about 15 years to catch up to today's utility rate. And that's if the utility rate doesn't go up at all. The utility rates, I mean, the reasons why the utility rates go up every year is, one, because the grid is old, it's costly to maintain, it's inefficient, and it's expensive to bring the electricity here, because we get a lot of our supply from Canada. So they're going up on average 68% per year, and our rate only goes up by 2.9%. So it takes us about 15 years to catch up to the utility rate today. So I mean, the odds of us exceeding EverSource or National Grid's rates are very, very, very slim.
All right.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Cool.
I think we may have asked this question the last time you were here.
Sure.
But if someone had this installed, as you described it, and after they were in the plant for five or 10 years, or some period of time, that was less than the lease period, and they wanted to sell their house, can you tell us how that would work?
Yeah, so there's a couple different options for the homeowner. So, one, they could just transfer the agreement to the next homeowner's. That's the easiest and smoothest option. They could also take the panels with them to their next house, but they'd have to pay some fees for removal and reinstallation. Or there is a buyout option, which, in our agreement, it shows what the amount is per year for the buyout. So...
What is the average buyout option?
I mean, it depends on how many panels we put up for an average system. Would probably be around 25 to 30 panels. It would probably be $15,000 to $20,000 to buy it out. But I mean, my parents, they live in Leominster, and I've had a few other customers this year that have sold their house within a day with the solar panels on it. So typically, that's the easiest thing to do. If you're going to sell, just transfer the agreement to the next homeowners.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Is your company public or private?
Private.
So are the majority shareholders from America, or where are they from?
No, yeah, we're an American company. We're based out in New Jersey, privately owned. Been in business for 22 years. Our owners, they started the company in '94 as an HVAC company. And then they saw the trend kind of before it was a trend. 2004, we became Trinity Solar. Yeah, we're all Northeast-based, so Massachusetts, Rhode Island, New York, New Jersey, Maryland, Delaware. And we're trying to get into some other states. But we're the fourth-largest solar company in the country, and we're the largest privately-held solar company. So we're proud. We don't ever want to go public or anything like that.
Where are your solar panels made?
I mean, we use, like, for, like, if a customer wanted to buy a system, they have more options where they can, we can kind of get any kind of panels they want. For the panels that go on the PPA, which I was explaining, those are Canadian solar panels. So I don't know where they're made, but Canadian solar. They're probably made somewhere, not in China, but somewhere out that way.
All right. And another question is, have these solar panels been linked with any sort of radiation or any other potentially harmful health risks?
No, not that I'm aware of. I've done a lot of research on that stuff, but no.
That's good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions from anyone? And I would entertain a motion.
I would move, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the door-to-door permit request of Steve Diamond of Trinity Solar, with the approval of the Police Chief, a favorable query report, and restrict the hours of Monday through Friday from 9:00 to 5:00, Saturday from 10:00 to 5:00, and Sunday from 12:00 to 5:00.
For a period of?
For a period of six months.
I second.
Motion by Arthur, second by Matthew. Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. The vote is three to one. Thank you very much. It's been approved.
Thank you. Awesome.
Good luck.
Good luck. Be respectful, please, because it's a touchy subject in town, and people have some valid fears and concerns. So just please be respectful.
So I believe that I pass a query check with the Police Chief. I don't know what the next steps are.
I'll do that one after the last.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
The next item is a request from Dan to reduce the members of the Town Government Study Committee. Dan?
That's right, Mr. Chairman. We have a Town Government Study Committee, and we have had difficulty filling all of the seats. And in order to have a better chance of making a quorum, I asked this board to reduce the committee from nine members to seven members.
Anyone have any questions for Dan?
So I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Motion by Dan to reduce the Government Study Committee membership from nine members to seven. Second by Arthur. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. That's four to zero.
And, Mr. Chairman, with that, I'll just put to the public, with the seven members, we still have one seat vacant. So if anyone would like to join, please call the Board of Selectmen's office and apply.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is to consider the appointment of Matthew Queenen, 66 Wampatuck Street, to a three-year term on the Pembroke Herring Fisheries Commission. The term will expire June 30th, 2017. Are there any questions from the board? Hearing none. I'm looking for a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would move the appointment of Matthew Queenen of 66 Wampatuck Street to the Herring Fisheries Commission.
Motion by Arthur. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Matthew.
I think it should be said that it's an alternate position, it looks like, too. Is that right, Sabrina?
I believe so, yes. Mr. Walter brought this in for an appointment, and they do have the alternates who see the head, so...
Okay.
They are moving James Hackett up to full membership.
So this vote will be to establish him as an alternate on the Zoning Board of Appeals?
Yeah, I'll amend my motion.
Motion amended. Motion accepted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. That's four to zero. Next item is to consider a one-day liquor license for the Pembroke Republican Town Committee to be held at the Pembroke Historical Society Building on September 17th from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. They seek to serve beer and wine, and they will be open from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Mr. Chairman, I would move the approval of a one-day liquor license, that being September 17th, for the Republican Town Committee.
Motion by Arthur. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dan. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Four to zero. Thank you. Our next item is the Pembroke Education Foundation is looking for approval to have a spectacular road race Sunday, October 23rd, at 9:00 a.m. It's a 5K road race. It's the 50th annual race to benefit the Pembroke Public Schools. Traffic and safety details will be coordinated with the Pembroke Police Department and parking with the Pembroke Public Schools. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the use of town roads for the Pembroke Ed Foundation date of October 23rd.
Motion by Arthur. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Matthew. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. That's four to zero. Our next item is to consider three sets of minutes for the Board of Selectmen's meeting. The first set of minutes is from a meeting of July 25th of this year. Is there a motion?
I would move the minutes by 25th.
Second. Motion by Arthur, second by Dan. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's four to zero. The second set of minutes is from the Board of Selectmen's meeting of August 1st, 2016.
Mr. Chairman, I would move the minutes of August 1st.
Second. Motion by Arthur, second by Dan. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hearing any opposed? Hearing none. That's four to zero. The third set of minutes to be approved from the Board of Selectmen's meeting of August 8th of this year. Would have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move the minutes of August 8th.
Second. Motion by Arthur, second by Dan. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. That's four to zero. We have old business.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Dan.
I brought up, under Town Administrator's Report, a couple of weeks ago, the citizens' concern regarding the Board of Assessors. I reached out to the Board of Assessors and got some great information that were very helpful to me, and provided the public information that was available. But there is some more information that I would like to see. And the person that wrote the Ask the Selectmen's, who had the Ask the Selectmen issue, asked me to further reach out to the Board of Assessors as Board of Selectmen through a letter. And what I would like the board to do tonight is to allow me to speak with Town Administrator Ed Thorne and Town Council on drafting the language of the letter, and then bring that drafted language to this board for review. I have a rough draft that I could present, but I don't think it's ready for prime time. So I would like to review it with Town Administrator and Town Council before I present it to the Board of Selectmen in a public forum, if this board would vote to allow me to do that.
I am a little familiar with the issue, having attended an assessors meeting. And I think Dan, what Dan wants to do seems very appropriate to me. And I think it's a good idea to, as Dan has said, to take his draft and discuss that with Ed and Colton and Paige, if necessary. And so I'll entertain a motion to move forward with that. Dan, would you want?
I... I move that the board allow me to speak to Town Administrator and Town Council regarding the language of the letter.
I second.
Second, now, motion by Dan, second by Matthew. All in favor of that action?
Aye.
Aye.
Hearing none.
And I will say, it's nothing nefarious or anything like that. It's, I just want to speak to the Town Administrator and Town Council to make sure, protect the town in nothing, protect the town's interest.
Any other... Well, we've got old business. I think Ed has something on hold.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm asking the board to vote to, on a motion to accept the parcels of land located at 369 and 385 Washington Street from Jane Benson. This property that was authorized by, excuse me, annual town meeting will close on August 29th. So Arthur, if you would please read that motion.
Okay. Move to acquire and accept the three parcels of land located at 369 and 384 Washington Street from Jane Benson, trustee of Maja Realty Trust, in accordance with the vote taken under Article 5 of the May 6, 2016 special town meeting.
Motion by Arthur, second by Dan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Four to zero.
Thank you. I'll have you folks sign this at the conclusion of the meeting.
Thank you, Ed. The Town Administrator's Report, Ed.
No, I'm going to defer that to new business.
Okay. So, under Ask the Selectmen, does anyone have an Ask the Selectmen issue?
Mr. Chairman, I did receive some emails, and I think you want to make comment on that?
Yes, I do.
All right.
Thank you. We have an email, and I'll read a message given to the Board of Selectmen. "This past Friday through Sunday, Boston Skydives airplane has passed at various low altitudes directly over my house approximately 100 times. It is my understanding that, under pressure from Hanson Residence, he agreed to alter his flight route. Now it's directly over Pembroke. He takes off at Cranland in Hanson, and from Cranland..." I'm sorry. "...he takes off at Cranland in Hanson and immediately turns left and does his climb and descent over Pembroke Residence houses. Hanson profits from Cranland, and Pembroke does not. Why should we in Pembroke have to bear the noise and danger of his constant flying over our homes? On Saturday, he first flew over my home at 7:40 a.m. and then finished approximately 12 hours later. On Sunday, he started at 10 a.m. and continued all day. This is not a burden that should be ours." And the gentleman is asking, this... This is not a burden that should be ours, and the gentleman is asking this board to look into this issue.
It's a legitimate concern and complaint, so I think we should look into it.
Mr. Chairman, I reached out to the Town Administrator in Hanson today, and I'm awaiting a reply regarding the comment that the resident made regarding the...
So after speaking with the Town Administrator in Hanson, we'll get some additional information, and when we have some more positive answers, we will get back to the resident, and certainly, I think I can speak for the board in saying that I don't think I'd like those planes flying over my house all day Saturday and Sunday, and if it's 100 times, that's an awful lot. So we will definitely look into this, and we will respond to the person under the terms of our Ask the Selectmen agenda item. There was another Ask the Selectmen question, and that concerned the flag that is at the Crown Castle International Corporation leases the tower and raises the flag on or just after May 1st, and lowers the flag on or after November 1st. The question was, the flag should be a 30-foot flag that we're used to seeing. However, a recent high wind storm tore the flag from its housing, and it was subsequently removed and temporarily replaced with what is now a 15-foot winter flag until unsettled weather has passed. So we are in touch with them over the flag, and they will return the 30-foot flag to its housing, and it may be up there, I failed to check that on the way over here tonight, I'm sorry to say, but we will stay on this and make sure that the proper flag is flying from that location. New business?
Mr. Chairman, I want to make the board aware of a section of the Act to Modernize Municipal Finance and Government, which was signed on August 9th, 2016, and one of them deals with the approval of warrants by a multi-member Board of Selectmen. And this allows Boards of Selectmen to designate one of its members to review and approve bills or payment warrants with a report provided at the next meeting. So basically what the board is facing, and we have a couple of weeks coming up where the board is not scheduled to meet, and so we're requesting that the Board of Selectmen designate somebody to sign the payroll and accounts payable warrants on August 30th and September 6th or 7th, or more preferably, September 7th, which is two days after Labor Day. So with some vacations coming up, we're asking the board to designate somebody to be able to sign those warrants the next couple of weeks, until the board meets again on September 12th.
Do we have anyone that could do that?
I'm generally around, you know, either morning or afternoon, I'd be glad to do it if nobody else is available.
So moved.
I walked right into that, didn't I?
I could, I would, I could volunteer to do the August 30th?
Yes, sir.
But I would not be available Labor Day week.
Well, why don't you take August 30th, and I'll take Labor Day, and we'll share it.
All right, that sounds good. Okay.
So I'd like to have a motion to that effect.
Make that motion, Arthur?
Yeah, I would move that the warrants be signed by a representative member of the board, that being Lou Stone for August 30th, and it would be me for September 7th.
Second.
Motion by Arthur, seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, I declare that passed.
Thank you.
Under new business, anyone else have anything?
Well, we have a new plaque that came, I don't know if you mentioned that, I was at the Board of Health meeting.
Go ahead, please.
Well, we had, in town on Tuesday, the Chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff, General Joseph Dunford, who came to Pembroke while he was summering in Marshfield, and he is a Quincy resident originally, so he's got some native roots to Massachusetts, but he was here and dedicated the plaques that you see on the wall to two soldiers that we lost in Iraq, Brian McPhillips and Matthew Bean. And it was quite a crowd, I've never seen so many people in Veterans Hall at one time, and he was an impressive person to meet, as I told my wife, I said, I've never met anybody as high-ranking as the general or as important to the activities of the world as General Dunford, so that was very nice of him to take time out of, you know, a busy schedule and a vacation day to come to Pembroke and basically, you know, give us a, you know, a firsthand look at what goes on behind the scenes, and he was terrific. I think everybody who was here would agree that, you know, he spoke like he lived in Pembroke all his life, and I don't think he's been here before. So he studied, as you would expect, somebody in his position would, and, you know, it was a very moving, it was a brief ceremony, but very moving, and it shows the touch of class that Dave McPhillips brings to the Veterans Office, and it just was great, the police and the fire were terrific, and it couldn't have gone any nicer, I don't think.
Yeah, I would agree, Arthur, I was fortunate enough to be here myself, and it was a very impressive ceremony. Certainly, the general was just an amazing person, to think that a man of his stature would be right here in Veterans Hall, but I think David McPhillips, our Veterans Agent, did a wonderful job arranging this and speaking with the military and coming up with what they needed to have from him, to have the general be here, and I think I'd like to thank Ed Thorne for being involved with kind of sprucing up Veterans Hall, I think it really looks great, it's big improvement, and, but all in all, it was a wonderful day for the town, and the general wasn't anything like I thought he would be. I don't know many generals, but I just thought a man in his position, head of the Joint Chiefs of Staff, I just pictured a different person, but obviously, when you look at his background and what he's done, and his education, and his 39 years of service in the Marine Corps, he's the guy for the job, so, again, it was a great event for the town. Anyone else? I have, and I was interested in reading this article in the Globe South, it's from Duxbury. "Duxbury Selectmen Have Written State Leaders To Let Them Know That They Too Are Against Valid Question Four: Legalizing Marijuana For Adult Recreational Use." "We are presently dealing with an unprecedented substance abuse crisis in the form of opioid addiction. This is no time to legalize a gateway drug in the face of this current epidemic," the selectmen said in their letter to Governor Baker, Senate President Rosenberg, and House Speaker DeLeo. Selectmen said they wanted to add their voices to those opposing the state ballot initiative." So I happen to agree with that, and I would like to propose to this board that we join Duxbury and issue a letter being opposed to valid question four. So, would anyone have any comments or opinions on this?
I agree with the chairman, I believe that legalization of marijuana would have very, very negative effects on our community and the surrounding communities of Massachusetts.
Mr. Chairman, I just attended on Sunday Pembroke Family Fund Days, and it was sponsored by the Pembroke Chamber of Commerce. In part of the receipts of the program that day, we're going to Pembroke Titans Against Drugs, and you know that group has been doing yeoman's work, trying to educate the community and help the community for this insidious opioid addiction, and part of that issue, part of that problem, is a gateway drug like marijuana. For some people, it's harmless, but for others, it's a step in the wrong direction. Massachusetts has already decriminalized small amounts of marijuana, we already have medical marijuana facilities, so to decriminalize marijuana is sending the wrong message, especially in this fight against opioid addiction. A fellow that I work with today, spoke with today at work, went to two wakes in Duxbury for overdoses on Saturday, so, not that you'll overdose from marijuana, but it is seen as a gateway drug, and there are already provisions in the state of Massachusetts for decriminalization of small amounts and medical marijuana, so to take the step of decriminalizing it and then face the consequences of what you see in Colorado, it's, I was listening to Karen Polito, Lieutenant Governor today, on the way in, she was speaking on WATD about this very subject, and her and Governor Baker are completely opposed to the legalization of marijuana, and she went on to speak about Colorado, of how the administrative costs of dealing with the legalization of marijuana over there are overwhelming the state. The taxes that they get are far beneath what the administrative costs are, especially since it's not all smokable marijuana, it's food and beverages, candies, and it's in trying to find a way to tax those that are commensurate with the administrative costs, and even the health costs that come from that, that we haven't even studied yet because it's still new. I don't want Massachusetts to fall into that same trap, so, all that having been said, I do agree with you, that we can send a letter.
Well, thank you for that information, Dan, I didn't hear that program, and I've been trying to keep up with what's going on in Colorado myself, and, which is another reason why I would oppose it, and hopefully, the people of the Commonwealth will agree. So I'd like to ask the Board of Selectmen to authorize myself and Ed to work on a letter that would state, as I have read, that this board would be opposed, and to that on the upcoming election. Anybody opposed the motion?
He wants to make the motion, I think.
Yeah, I'll make the motion, I move to accept this letter.
Good, thank you, Matthew. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Dan. Any questions or other issues? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that's four to zero. Thank you very much. Upcoming issues, on August 26th, the special town meeting warrant closes. It's a very tight window, and I would urge anyone who is interested in proposing an article of the special town meeting to get it into the Board of Selectmen's office. We have a need for executive session, Mr. Thor?
Yes, sir.
Will somebody read that motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I would move we enter executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining and litigating position of the public party, and the chair so declares, it's regarding all the unions.
Motion by Arthur, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dan. A roll call vote, Dan?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
And I vote yes. We will not be coming back into open session to take any votes or conduct any other town business, so we will be leaving you to go into executive session, and before we go, thank you for watching, and the next regularly scheduled meeting of this board will be September 12th, 2016. Have a happy and safe Labor Day. Thank you.